On Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's stay home save lives order. This format enables the planning commission to meet, hear the community and take care of business while keeping its members, staff, and the public safe. Today, our meeting will begin with public comment followed by a work session on middle housing code amendments. There are several housekeeping announcements and instructions related to the meeting format that I need to take care of first. Thank you for your patience while I work through them. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. For those who join the meeting via computer, device, or phone, your microphone, webcam, and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting as an attendee. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't done so already, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer, laptop, or other device, click once on the hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, plus press star nine. When the public comment begins, our meeting moderator will announce the next two speakers at a time. When it is your turn, the moderator will announce your name and unmute your microphone. Public comment is limited to 10 minutes, so your time to speak will be based on the number of people signed up to speak. Finally, I want to thank everyone again for their patience, flexibility, and good humor as we work through this virtual meeting format. As always, feel free to contact staff if there is testimony you were not able to provide or wish to get to us in a different manner. So do we have? Moving on to public comment, public comment is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the planning commission on any topics, except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. The planning commission reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for public comment. Generally, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. However, the planning commission reserves the right, reserves the option to reduce the time allowed each speaker. Wow, there's a sentence there somewhere to reduce the time allowed each speaker based on the number of people requesting to speak. As a reminder, your hand must be raised to be in the queue for public comment. When it is your turn and your microphone has been unmuted by staff, please state your name clearly before beginning your comments. Staff will let you know when your time is up. When your time has concluded, the moderator will mute your microphone and move on to the next speaker. All right, now, do we have anyone in our queue to speak to us today?
This time, we don't have anybody that's raised their hand.
One with a raised hand, okay. So I will then close the public comment period. And we will move straightly directly to our work session. Middle Housing Code Amendments update staffed by Terry Harding.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Ramey, and welcome, commission and attendees. Today, I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Um, as I said, my name is Terry Harding. I'm the principal planner for the community planning and design team. And today, we are excited to bring you a deep dive on House Bill 2001 administrative rules and the model code, which were both adopted in December. First, we'll briefly cover what's in our existing R1 zone standards. And then Lauren Summers will walk us through the rules and leave some time for Q and A. And then our consultants, Matt Hasty and Kate Rogers, will go through the model code. And we'll pause after each section of the agenda to allow commissioner questions. And then finally, we'll talk about next step. As a reminder, our project schedule has code products being delivered from our consultants by June of this year. We're here at the planning commission check-in at the beginning of February. There's a little triangle there. And we'll be back each month through May to discuss interim products with you. Public outreach will ramp up this month, and an online survey is launching this Friday, February 5. There's also a city club program airing this Friday and roundtable and healthy democracy meetings throughout the month. We're also be releasing meetings in a box, which will likely end up being called something else like meetings on a walk or meetings around the block to encourage folks to get away from their computers. But those are in the process of being put together. So I'm going to jump right in and hand it over to Jeff, who is going to talk a little bit about what our code requires currently.
Good morning, everyone. Jeff Kuper. I'm the senior planner on the land use side of things, and I'm just going to really quickly go over the standards that are applied for most developments of, or most single-family developments in the R1 zone. So this is a kind of a simplified version. In attachment B, we've pared out just the the most crucial items for single-family dwellings. The first one obviously is density. We have a net density maximum of 14 units per acre. Where in R1, there is actually no minimum density, so it can be, there's no, there's a maximum lot size, but no minimum density in itself. We also have standards around lot sizes and lot dimensions. So, you know, it's minimum lot size for R1 is 4,500 square feet. And then you have lot width, lot frontage requirements. And then you move into more of the design, you know, the design of the lot itself, which gets into requirements around building height, which is 30 feet typically, with some exceptions for chimneys, appearances, design features, things like that. And then you have your traditional setbacks, which interior lot lines are, it's five feet. And then from the front, it's 10. Bar and garages, again, the table covers that in a little more detail. And then there's lot coverage. This is another tool we have for kind of controlling the massing of buildings. And so here in R1, it's 50%. And so you can basically cover 50% of your lot with a building or structure. And then parking, you've got one parking space per dwelling required. And others, so there are quite a lot of nuances within our land use code surrounding these standards. So it does go a fair bit deeper than this. This was just trying to give you a snapshot of the typical requirements that are that are placed on developments. And and just to think a little more broadly about it is in R1, currently, there are requirements for lot sizes for duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. And I think I'll stop there and you can reference attachment B for that table of requirements and standards. Thanks. I'll head back to Terry.
Thanks, Jeff. It'll become clear why we're talking about this in just a moment because we're going to go into Lauren's piece talking about the rules and all the fancy slides for you, Lauren, but this is your first one.
Great. Thank you, Terry. So just making sure, can everyone hear me? Okay. I see it. That's great. So this is an exciting day. We've been talking kind of around and about these standards for a really long time, it feels like. And so today is the day that we're really going to dive in. I, Terry allocated 20 minutes for me to talk and then 20 minutes for Q and A. I am more than happy to take questions throughout the presentation, so you don't have to talk with me talk for 20 minutes straight. And if it makes sense, you know, if we're at a place where you have a question, please feel free. I won't necessarily be able to see very well. So Commissioner Ramey or Commissioner Beeson, if you see folks who have questions, can you jump in and stop me and and we'll we'll handle it that way. Um, so you should have received as an attachment to your AIS about, I think it ended up being about 13 pages. Cheat sheet, for lack of a better word, a handout to the model rules. I'm sorry, not the model rules, the Adopt Oregon Administrative Rules, which we have in the past referred to as the minimum standards, but because there are going to be so many minimums and maximums flying around today, I'm just going to talk about them as the rules. So those are the administrative rules adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission in early December, and that became effective on December 31 of 2020, that are intended to implement the requirements of House Bill 2001. And do set sort of minimum standards, minimum requirements for cities who choose to adopt their own code provisions to implement Hospital 2001 rather than just adopting the model code. And so I'm going to talk to you about the rules and then Matt and Kate will talk to you about the middle, or I'm sorry, the model code. And there's kind of a lot of interplay between the two, as you'll see as we get into the discussion. The rules are extensive. There are over 40 pages of rules, which we attempted to synthesize into that 13-page document that you have and have further synthesized into the PowerPoint slides today. So this is still kind of a high-level overview, but at least we can start to get into the specifics. And certainly, if you have any questions about the the handout document or the rules themselves, that's all fair game today. So feel free to ask them. Let's see. Okay, so this slide just kind of gives you a high-level overview of what we'll be talking about today. Terry, if you'll go to the next slide. So the first question is, you know, what what is middle housing? What kind of housing types are we talking about when we're talking about middle housing? And as you can see, we're talking about duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. The plexes are pretty self-explanatory. I think we all know what those are. The one decision point for the city at at some point in the game is whether or not we are required to allow detached plexes. But we can allow detached plexes in addition. So that is kind of something to think about in the back of your mind. Townhouses, there have to be at least two of them attached in a row. And then it can be far more than that. And cottage clusters are typically, well, they are defined as small footprinted, less than 900 square feet, detached units clustered around a common courtyard. So those, that's what we're talking about in terms of kind of visualization when we talk about those housing types. Next slide, Terry. So big question, you know, where will middle housing be developed in the city of Eugene? Duplexes must be allowed on all lots and parcels zoned for residential use where detached, single-family dwellings are allowed. So if you have a residentially zoned lot or parcel and you're allowed to build a detached, single-family dwelling, then you also have to be allowed to build a duplex. Other middle housing types have to be allowed in all residential zones, but not necessarily every lot or parcel. So there's a little bit more regulatory flexibility when it comes to the other middle housing types. The city is allowed to regulate middle housing to comply with protective measures that the city has adopted to comply with some of the statewide planning goals. So those types of regulations in Eugene include the WB Wetland Buffer Overlay Zone, WR Water Resources Overlay Zone, those are goal five protective measures. Some of our historic regulations are also goal five. I think WQ Water Quality is a protective measure for goal six. There's some allowance for regulation of areas in the floodway under goal seven. And then the Greenway under goal 15. And for coastal communities, they're allowed to regulate for some of those coastal goals, but we don't have coastal properties. I see Commissioner Edwards.
Thanks, Lauren. I, oh, sorry, Chair, am I okay?
Letter buck, you're good.
Okay, sorry. Appreciate that. I just had a quick question. Do our special area zones, like our neighborhood, do those, are those exempt from having to, and I'm just kind of curious how we're treating those. Are we, are those following the same rules as all the neighborhoods or are they carved out for some reason?
That's a great question, Commissioner Edwards, and that's my very next slide. So Terry.
Okay, I should have just been patient. Thank you.
No, you're doing it. So the the next question is, you know, what is zone for residential use? What does that mean? And it means that it implements a comprehensive plan designation, a residential comprehensive plan designation, and where residential use is kind of the primary use in the zone. And so for Eugene, the zones that we're talking about are are 1, 2, 3, and 4, low density through high density residential zones, and a number of our special area zones, or at least some sub-areas within those special area zones. And those are all listed on the slide. So things like Chambers, Chase, downtown West Side, et cetera. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Edwards?
Kind of. I'm just curious, like, it doesn't specify here whether or not they would be exempt. Does that make sense?
They would not be exempt. So these are, when we think about where is middle housing required to be allowed, it is generally on lots or parcels that are, have a residential zoning designation and where you could build a detached, single-family dwelling. And so these are the zones that count as residential zones for Eugene. And then you would look at the specific water parcel to see if you could build a detached, single-family, but I believe that that's an outright permitted use in all of these zones, so you would be able to.
Thank you. That does answer my question. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Beeson, you have a question?
I do. I just, I kind of want to follow up on that and clarify where middle housing can be developed. And I, you know, you're you're getting at it. If I could just say I'm, as I've gone through everything, so it, what appears to me, I mean duplexes must be allowed any, all lots in residential zones that currently allow single-family dwellings. And I believe that for duplexes, that also includes lots that are in gold-protected lands that currently allow single-family dwellings. That's kind of the way I'm reading everything. And if I could just say the other part briefly, and then you can maybe correct me or see if I'm misguided here. The higher middle housing types, all of the rest of it, they must be allowed on any lots in residential zones that currently allow single-family dwellings. And lots that can accommodate those specific middle housing types, I guess, kind of consistent with the minimum standards that are in the rules and then subject to any limits we might apply to goal-protected lands, because the way I, on the goal-protected lands, it appears that if we allow single-family dwellings on lots that are gold-protected, we need to allow middle housing if we can under the standards. Is that, is that correct?
Commissioner Beeson, I think you said it really well. There are some within the allowance for regulation for gold-protected lands, depending on the goal, there are some slight differences between how we're allowed to treat duplexes and how we're allowed to treat other middle housing types. But for the most part, and especially the way that Eugene has implemented our protective measures, they will apply to middle housing in the same way that they would apply to single-family, I think. So then that's kind of a very general statement and Jeff, specifically, please feel free to jump in if you feel like I'm starting to get off track. But we have these, we've chosen to set up gold-protective measures as these overlay zones that apply to properties, you know, regardless of the way that they're going to be developed. And that overlay zone would continue to apply to a property. And then we would look to see whether that, you know, that property met the minimum lot size requirements for a triplex, as you point out, or other things.
Right.
But it shouldn't generally prohibit a middle housing type from developing on the property. Is that?
Okay. Well, I, yeah, and I don't want to take us off too far with that. I I just find when I read the material, and we've been going through this for a number of months, I find myself wanting to clarify as much as I can where middle housing will be allowed, where it will be allowed on, for I guess, again, the higher level middle housing. So I'm still, I'm just wanting to kind of keep getting clear on that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Beeson. I think that's, I mean, as, as you are, and I think the, you know, the more we start to actually develop code product, the clearer that will continue to become. This is sort of a general, you know, which zones are we talking about? And I, I think that the bottom line answer is that most middle housing types will be allowed in most places that are residentially zoned, subject to things like the lot being big enough to accommodate that particular middle housing type or something like that.
So those are the, yeah, those are the standards I was referring to. I mean, the way I'm reading it and you're looking, I've got the, you've got your slide up here on residential zones. They, they are allowed on all lots in residential zones that, again, meet the size requirements and so on, but any lot that allows a single-family dwelling. Pretty much. Okay.
Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. I'm just going to tag in a little bit of that. My question is regarding goal seven and the floodplain. I know that in my work with the urban reserves, we excluded goal seven floodplain properties from being considered for expansion into urban reserves. I'm wondering if, and we did that because we didn't want to encourage development in the floodplain, in the, in the areas that was dangerous. So it's, in my reading, it says that we can regulate missing middle in FEMA mapped floodplains. Is that true? Or if we did that, would we have to limit all housing in FEMA floodplains? Because right now, we are allowed to, we are allowing housing to be built in floodplains. Obviously, there's a lot of houses that are built in the, in the FEMA map. But do we want to encourage more density in areas that are prone to natural hazards? Can we exclude missing middle housing expansion in the floodplain without excluding single-family in the floodplain?
Commissioner Borowski, it's a great question and one that I think I'm not prepared to answer today, but will definitely. And I think there may be more of those as we go through the discussion, something that we'll take note of and certainly think about in terms of code concepts and as code writing and then, you know, coming back to planning commission, when there are choices to be made. But it's a great question. And as you'll find, the rules are complicated. And so I'm loathe to kind of take a position right now without spending a little bit more time thinking about it and reading the rules, but I appreciate the question.
Thank you. So Lauren, I just want to have a follow-up question because as you noted, the rules are complicated. When you take a look at that, because we do have a lot of flood hazard areas and different zones, so I'm hoping the rules allow and establish some flexibility because if we were to take all, obviously, that's a lot of property. So there are going to be certain areas that have hazards that are worth looking at in more detail in terms of viability potentially, but there are a lot of areas that are easily developed and you just go a foot above the floodplain and it doesn't present the risk that I think Commissioner Borowski is talking about potentially. So I'm hoping when you look at the rules, there's some, there's an ability for the jurisdiction for us to kind of create rules that make sense and are nuanced based on context. Thanks.
Commissioner Borowski, I see your hand is, is waving. I'm not sure. Okay, so I, I just have a quick, as always, coming from a point of, I should know, but I, I'm not sure I know. In the special area zones, one I'm most familiar with is the Walnut Station, which is actually mixed-use. So in a mixed-use situation, with a single-family housing or something that was, and that, and that zone is also based on form-based code ideas. So how do these two things intersect? I guess my question is, could you do a duplex or, or triplex in a mixed-use zone? In something like the Walnut area?
I see Jeff has unmuted himself, and so I'm going to hand to him.
Yeah, I, so we, we took a look when we were looking at special area zones and identified those that have explicit permissions for single-family residential purposes. And many of the special area zones, we, the middle housing types are already permitted. Naturally, we'll have to make sure that those are consistent with the provisions of the Middle Housing Code changes and what's being required by the state. But, and I haven't, I'll, I'll need to look specifically at Walnut Station to answer your question. I'm happy to look into that. But generally speaking, that's how we've been looking at it is, so those zones that allow for, you know, up to R4 densities and those and those instances that also allow a single-family home, we're, we're essentially saying the middle housing rules apply and we'll have to apply them the same as we would anywhere else. But it's going to take a fair amount of investigation into each special area zone to see how that's going to impact each one, and that, that information will be forthcoming.
So, and just as a follow-up, that means you could, because there are no minimum standards, you could actually underbuild some of those areas? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm, I'm gonna get back to you on that question because I don't think I have, I have the perfect answer for you.
That would sort of be my blanket about R3, the R3, R4, and the mixed-use, would we actually end up underbuilding them potentially because we can't set minimums?
So ju-just to be clear, in many of those areas, we do have a minimum density that's still, so it's really, R1 is the one where there's no minimum density. So in those places where the density applies and there's a minimum that still holds.
It doesn't go up the chain. Okay, got it. Thank you. Ah, Commissioner Isaacson.
Thank you. And this, this question for staff, I'm sure that it may even be in a future slide, so maybe jump it down here. But is there any forecasting on how much middle housing will be created from, from the designation and the efforts that we're undertaking?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that question. We're working with Equinoastwest to look at the economic feasibility of middle housing in Eugene, and they're nearing completion of their report, and it will have estimates of what we expect to see once the rules are in place.
Are those estimates going to be categorized by a time period, so five-year, 10-year, 20-year out, or is it just going to be as a block?
Jeff, I don't know if you know the answer to that. I think it's looking at market economics now, given Eugene's current economic market, where would these types be feasible? And then it will make some assumptions about a percentage of that that would actually happen. So I don't know if it will really be this many in each time period, but an idea of rate of development is what the study is, my understanding.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, Terry, I think we can move on to the next slide. So here's sort of the corollary of, you know, where we are not required to allow middle housing. And that is sort of writ large on lots or parcels that are not zoned for residential use. So for example, property lots primarily zoned for commercial, agricultural, industrial, or public uses. So that's our commercial zones, industrial zones, ag zone, and public zones. Next slide. So timing, and we've talked about this before too. The middle housing code changes have to be adopted and effective not later than June 30, 2022, or if we don't make that deadline, then the model code will apply directly to the development of middle housing in Eugene until we've adopted code changes and if necessary, comprehensive plan changes to comply with Hospital 2001. There is a possibility of an extension of that timeline for areas with significant infrastructure deficiencies. You might have heard this referred to as the IBTER, Infrastructure-Based Time Extension Request Process. And the infrastructure that the rules are looking at is water waste, water stormwater, and/or the rules are looking at is water waste, water stormwater and/or transportation. But those deficiencies ha- do have to be pretty significant. There's an application process that a city would need to go through with DLCD to receive a time extension. And part of that is discussing how those deficiencies will be remedied and how that will be paid for. So that's all kind of, it's not a get out of jail free card. That's all part of it. And at this point, I know that public work staff is involved in discussions. And we're looking at Eugene's infrastructure, but my understanding is at this point, we're not aware of any significant infrastructure deficiencies that would require an IBTR, a time extension request. So there's no plan to submit one currently. I see Commissioner Taylor, how's your hand up?
Thank you, Lauren. I just have a quick question just to, for confirmation is that I'm assuming with code changes, the comp plan is being looked at as well as the TSP for compatibility with any code changes that would occur? And those two documents would be updated within that same timeline to meet the deadline?
Commissioner Taylor, the comprehensive plan is being looked at. One of the things that Houseville 2001 exempted cities from is compliance with the transportation planning rule for these middle housing types. So we don't have to worry about TSP, TPR compliance for this particular code update. But we are looking at the comprehensive plan and trying to decide whether that would need to be updated as well, especially when it comes to some of the prohibitions on maximum density that we'll talk about in just a minute. Yeah, thank you, Terry. So, and then we already talked about this, if, if we miss the deadline, then the model code will apply directly until our code is updated to comply with 2001. Next slide. Okay.
Quick, Lauren, that slide said 2020. It was supposed to be 2022, right?
Yeah, yes, correct. Thank you.
Perfect.
Sorry, Commissioner, yes. 2022, that's an important distinction. Um, okay, so getting into standards, these slides are not that exciting, but I kind of, I use the slides to highlight the high level types of standards that we're talking about. And then I will go through and talk you through the standards. If you'd like to refer to the tables in attachment A to your AIS, there's a lot more information in those tables. So starting with duplexes in terms of approval process, the city has to apply the same approval process to duplexes as it would apply to detached single family dwellings. In Eugene, construction of a detached single family dwelling in R1 is typically allowed by right or is outright permitted. And so it only requires a building permit. So therefore a duplex would be the same, would only require a building permit. In terms of numerical standards, the rules say the city is not required to allow more than two dwelling units on a duplex lot or parcel. So a duplex is not entitled to an ABU because that would be three units. But the city could decide to allow that if that's something that we wanted to do. Turning to citing standards for duplexes, a lot of them just hearken back to detached single families. So the minimum lot size for duplexes cannot be greater than the minimum lot size for detached single family in the same zone. In Eugene, typically in R1, minimum lot size for detached single family is 4,500 square feet. So that is what we would expect to see for duplexes as well. In terms of density, the city cannot apply density maximums to duplexes. So there's, we just don't look at a maximum density. Setbacks cannot be greater than the setbacks applicable to detached single family in the same zone. So again, in R1 typically, front yard setbacks for detached single family are 10 feet and interior setbacks are five. Height, maximum height for duplexes can't be lower than maximum height standards for detached single family. And again, typically in R1, the height for detached single family is 30 feet. So that same height limit would apply to duplexes. Commissioner Taylor, I see you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. So when the cities, when the city can't apply density maximum to the development of duplexes, does that mean that if in R1, the maximum is 14 units, that that 14 units can't be applied when developing duplex? Explain that to me. I guess I'm.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, again, the, so the rules are written, as a caveat, the rules are written for all large cities in the state of Oregon and don't take into account kind of how specific code language is written. But my interpretation of that requirement is, yes, exactly what you said. If, if a duplex were developed in R1 in such a way that it would exceed 14 units per acre of density, we couldn't say no just because it exceeded the density maximum.
So for instance, if there was a subdivision with 14 units and each of the lot, or excuse me, 14 lots, each of the lots had a duplex, you have double the amount of the 14, you couldn't regulate it because the duplexes are each, are in each of those lots. So you'd have 28, something like that.
I think that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Parking standards for duplexes, city cannot require more than two off-street parking spaces per duplex. And for, I think almost all of these types, the rules talk about the city may, but is not required to allow on-street parking credits to satisfy those off-street parking requirements. So if there's, you know, the developer can show that there's substantial on-street parking, they could receive a credit for one or two of those spaces and not have to develop as much of the off-street parking. Lot coverage floor area ratio, the city's not required to apply it, but if we choose to, then the cumulative lot coverage or FAR cannot be less than it would be for a detached, detached single family home in the same zone. In Eugene, we typically don't apply FAR to residential. It's, we usually use lot coverage and as Jeff said, typically in R1, the maximum lot coverage for a single family detached home is 50%. So it would be the same for a duplex. And then design standards. Again, if you, if we choose to apply design standards to a new duplex, they have to be the same that would be applied to a detached single family dwelling. And the city may not apply design standards to duplexes created through conversion of an existing single family dwelling. Mr. Edwards.
Quick question. So the 50% lot coverage, are you saying that a, a, a single detached house on a lot can not occupy more than 50% of the total land? I'm not sure. Are there exceptions to that? Because I know of like a lot of structures. My neighborhood is one of them where they're pretty, they're pretty tight on all four sides. And I can't imagine that they're, that they are only taking up 50% of the lot. So I'm just curious about that.
All right. So through the PUD, planned unit development process and other specific options within the code, you can go over the 50% rule. And also it's, it's a pretty strict interpretation of 50% where it's, it doesn't account for things like decks or eaves. It's literally the building or structure footprint. So it, it actually is much narrower than, than it might appear. So there, there are options to get above that.
Okay. So if there's a PUD, okay, because I, yeah, there's just no way. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fragala.
Thank you. So I, I am curious about as we think to implement our climate action goals as well and decrease result, reliance upon automobiles. Would we be allowed in major corridors where we're attempting to have strong transportation support? Would we be allowed to consider decreased requirements for parking spaces?
Yes, Commissioner Fragala. We could limit it to transportation or transit quarters or it, it could happen anywhere. This is a maximum number of off-street parking spaces that we're allowed to require. But we could certainly require fewer than the maximum. And a builder could build more than the maximum, but we can't require them to build more.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thanks. Actually, this is probably more of a question for Terry and Jeff. Is Commissioner Fragala's question is a good one, which I kind of have at the back of my mind and since it's been asked. I'm just going to go for it is obviously there's some scope creep that could happen, right? And I'm just wondering in terms of, not necessarily scope creep, but it's just, there's a lot of comprehensive elements that can be attached to encouraging housing. For instance, we have exempt downtown exempt corridors. So now we have new exempt corridors. So essentially the analysis of how we more proactively, like the consultant said, allow, encourage and and incentivize, I think those were the three. So I'm just curious, at this point, is the charge for planning commission, are we still in a place of kind of brainstorming what this scope is? Or is there, does staff or legal counsel, do you have kind of a that we want to, is there a limit? Is there, yeah. And that might be too big of a question to answer right now, but I'm just curious what the approach is.
I think it's a great question because we talked about this in preparing for today's meeting with the goal of today. The goal of today is to focus on explaining the rules. And so this really is the allow option that we're going through here. But you're absolutely right. And that's what we're working on putting out for survey and other public outreach is questions around what if we wanted to encourage? What if we wanted to incentivize? And so the public outreach period of February and on into the following months, we'll get at those issues. And we are hopeful that after those meetings, your next meeting in March will be when we start bringing some staff recommendations based on what we heard from the public and everything that you've been discussing. So it, I think for today, brainstorming is great, asking questions about how can we do this, that or the other. But our, our goal is to really give you a solid foundation of understanding what the rules require and, and what the model code requires. Does that make sense? Thanks.
And I think part, part of the idea, thank you, Terry, part of the idea is that then we don't spend a lot of time as we go forward, doing things that just aren't going to be allowed. So we have this sort of basis of what are we actually required to do? And so beginning to brainstorm about solutions then beyond that and asking questions about is very appropriate today.
Okay, I think we're ready to move to triplex standards, Terry, if you'll move us on slide wise. So very similar slide. They get a little boring here in the middle, sorry. So again, approval process for triplexes, same as that for a single family detached, which means building permit. Numerical standards, the city may, but is not required to allow more than four dwelling units on a lot or parcel, including any accessory dwelling units. Minimum lot size is based on detached single family lot size. So if the minimum lot size in the zone for detached single family is 5,000 square feet or less, and in Eugene, it's typically 4,500 square feet, then the minimum lot or parcel size for a triplex may not exceed 5,000 square feet. So you could have minimum lot size for a triplex be the same as single family at 4,500. You can have it be 5,000 square feet, but it cannot be greater than 5,000 square feet. Um, city may not apply density maximums to triplexes. Setbacks may not be greater than those applicable to detached single family, which we talked about are typically 10 in the front yard and five in the interior. Height, maximum height for triplexes may not be lower than that for detached single family or 25 feet. But in our case, detached single family is typically 30 feet. So I would expect that triplex would also be 30 feet. Parking is based on the size of the lot for triplexes. So if the lot is less than 3,000 square feet, the city may not require more than one off-street space. If the lot is between 3,000 and 4,999 square feet, the city is limited to two off-street spaces. And if it's greater than 5,000 square feet, then we can require up to three.
Commissioner Edwards.
I'm slightly confused about if the parcel is less than 3,000 square feet, because I thought our minimum lot size is 4,500.
For it. Yes. It currently is 4,500 square feet. The city could decide to say triplexes are allowed on 2,000 square foot lots. And if we did that, then those lots, we could only require one off-street space for. If we said all triplexes have to be on 5,000 square foot lots, we could require up to three off-street spaces. And if we said same as single family at 4,500 square feet, then it would be two off-street spaces.
And so then just follow up real quick then, Lauren, would that be part of this process? That, that we be reassigning the minimum lot sizes to, you know, to, to allow for something on 3,000 square feet? Would that be part of this process or is that another process that would have to cover that?
I think it would be part of this process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, lot coverage floor ratios, same thing. We apply generally lot coverage to residential and the maximum lot coverage for a detached single family is 50%. So would accept, expect that for triplexes as well.
Commissioner Taylor. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what you just said, Lauren. I think you said it really, really well. And Terry, to Commissioner Edwards and the public listening, is that really you're talking about bumper guards right now. So essentially you're saying the model code, the regulation for triplex can't be, go beyond 5,000. And it has the ability to have 2,000, and these are the parking requirements that are allowed by regulation per the House Bill 2001. So I think these are the important, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Fragala. I think these are the parts that we're listening to now is where is there opportunity within these regulations that we can potentially consider the encourage or incentivize? So, yeah, right? Did I get that right, Lauren?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeson.
Yeah, I want to try that a little differently. Maybe I'm not right. I'm thinking of this as I went through all the material and went through the AIS and the, and the chart you had in there that showed everything for the various middle housing types. And as we go through these slides, one thing that we're doing is Commissioner Taylor called it bumper guards. I mean, I, one thing we're doing is getting clear on what the minimum standards are from the state that Eugene needs to comply with when we implement or allow development of middle housing. And the way my brain works, not that everyone should go like this, but I, I, I find myself wanting to get clear all the way through on what the minimum requirements are that we have to do. And then it, it, we would go back or we would, as we go, as we progress from there, we would begin to identify areas where we might supplement. We might become more flexible and so on. And that's going to take a lot of discussion in all these various areas to all with the goal of possibly allowing more middle housing than what the minimum would require. Am I kind of on track there?
I think you're exactly on track, Commissioner Beeson. I think, I think you can think about it in both the way that you have described and the way that Commissioner Taylor described. It's, we call them minimum standards, but it, it gets a little confusing because it truly is writ large, the minimum that the city is required to do to comply with the bill. But some of the minimum standards are maximums, so we can acquire more than X. And some of them are minimums. We have to require at least as much as X. And then as Commissioner Edwards' question kind of illuminated, there's a lot of interplay between the various standards. So we have a, you know, So we have a, you know, can't require a maximum lot size that's greater than 5,000 square feet, okay? Then depending on what the actual size of a particular lot is, there are specific parking regulations associated with that lot and maximums associated with those. So it does get complicated.
So just a very quick follow-up. And as I do, as I get into this and learn about it, the minimum, these minimum standards, or whatever it is that we're going to call them, I find, I've been looking at the middle housing code that I know we're going to talk about, and there's also the Division 46 Middle Housing, I guess it's the OAR rules that we have. I'm trying to, just maybe a short answer of where do these standards, they reside in these documents?
Yes. Yes. So what I am talking to you about right now is what is in Division 46 of the OARS. And there have been kind of colloquially referred to as the minimum standards.
Okay.
Then separately, we have the model code, and that's what Kate and Matt will be talking to you about in just a few minutes. If Eugene doesn't adopt its own standards, then the model code would apply directly. But some of the minimum standards that I'm talking to you about reference the model code. So we're either sort of required to pull in pieces of the model code, or we might choose to pull in pieces of the model code to satisfy some of the minimum standards, because the model code satisfies the minimum standards. So.
So I need to kind of keep all those, keep all those documents handy.
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Isaacson.
Thank you. Back to the forecasting. So if, if some of these requirements are going to be a little bit woody, they go back and again, change it and allow for increased density that's not part of the plan right now, that's going to obviously drastically change whatever forecasting we're coming up with. So is the forecasting that's going to be coming out going to wait until those rules are set and final? Or are we going to have a forecast that can be amended once the final rules are agreed upon by council?
Commissioner Isaacson, I'm happy to take that really briefly and just say that we based, that analysis is going to be based on the typical R1 standards, AKA the lots that are most likely to be impacted by this. Because like we said earlier, like the higher density lots already allow these, these things, technically speaking. So it's unlikely that the analysis will necessarily need to be redone since it was based on the model code requirements, therefore the minimum. In the event that we do go way towards the incentivized, we may have to look a little further at those. But right now, we're not anticipating having to do that.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, because part of your question touches on how do we anticipate and plan for the future? And this is fundamentally changing how we deal with density. And so it will impact how we do our next buildable land inventory and how we account for our housing need into the future. And that we can't start calibrating until we have adopted code, but it will be significantly different than the way we've done in the past.
Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. When discussing siting standards in regards to triplexes, quads, and the higher intensity uses, there is an allocation that you can, or that it must be allowed on 75% of the census tract. I'm just wondering where that fits in. How do you, if, if the city decides to, that, yes, we want to put some sort of a cap on this, and I, I'm not advocating for putting a cap everywhere, but I do feel that there's going to be, especially when we get the Eco Northwest analysis, there's going to be areas of this city that are more impacted or more developed, let's say. And we're going to, I think that's what we're going to hear from some of the neighbors, you know. So there is an ability to say, okay, we're going to allow tri, duplexes can go everywhere, but triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and row houses, there is some sort of a 75% census tract. Can you talk to me a little bit about that and how staff is looking at that going forward?
Sure, Commissioner Borowski. So that is a piece that we'll get to later in the PowerPoint, but I'm happy to talk about it now as well. There, the rules allow for alternative minimum lot size or maximum density standards under certain conditions. So DLCD was trying to incorporate a little bit of flexibility for cities to do something a little different than kind of the flat minimum standard that they thought was appropriate. And the, the pieces that you're referring to, you know, the various middle housing types on percentages of lots or parcels, and then looking at census tracts, apply to if Eugene wanted to adopt a minimum lot size or maximum density standard that is different than the ones that we've been talking about in the rules. We would have to go through and make a bunch of findings to show that despite these alternate standards, middle housing is still being allowed kind of throughout the city. And it is allowed on, you know, it says triplexes must be allowed on 80% of lots or parcels, quads on 70%, townhouses on 60%, cottage clusters on 70%. And then also, there's a separate finding about how those kind of fill out various census tracts within the city. So it's a little bit of flexibility. There's a lot of extra kind of findings that go into that analysis. And then DLCD still has to give it the thumbs up at the end of the day. So that, but that, that extra analysis only applies if the city wants to do something different than the minimum lot size or maximum density standards that are already in the rules.
So one, just quick follow-up question on that. Would that be a tool that would be, we could use to help encourage density in the areas that we've been talking about through Invision Eugene along our, our transit corridors and those types of places where for the last eight to 10 years, we've been saying this is where we want to densify. Is that a tool that we might be able to use to help encourage density in this type of housing, let's say, a quarter of a mile from a transit corridor?
I take a stab at that, Lauren, and we can tag team a little bit, because I, I understand it to be the opposite. Actually, I, I think the performance metric approach that you're talking about is a way for some cities to try to exclude lots from providing middle housing. And aside from that, we are still able to encourage near transit corridors, but we have to do one or the other broadly across the city, either meet those minimum standards or go through the analysis that would be required to make a case to exclude certain ones. And our, our thought after reading through that is that, and we talked about this with our consultant team, is that it wouldn't get us someplace significantly different than the minimum standards. The percentages are very high, and so that's our working understanding of that option.
Thank you.
Agree, Lauren?
Yeah, I agree. Thanks, Terry.
Hey, Carrie, I want to do a time check here just quickly. I'm presuming you're watching the time. That's all I want to say.
I am. I think we should be good as long as we finish up Lauren's piece within about 15 minutes.
15. Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great. Okay. Quickly turning to design standards for triplexes, it's a little bit different. You recall duplexes was basically same design standard as detached, single-family. For triplexes, the city has some choices. You can just use the design standards for triplexes in the model code. So here, Commissioner Beeson is one of those places where we can just look right to the model code and pull something. The city could adopt its own design standards that are less restrictive than those in the model code. So can't be more restrictive, but could be less restrictive. Alternatively, the city could decide to apply the same design standards to triplexes as we do to detached, single-family. But there are some, as we get into that kind of higher level housing types, there are some requirements about which design standards can be scalable and which are not. So and I'm getting a little out of my wheelhouse here, but for example, like primary entrances, you don't, we can require four primary entrances all facing the street for a quadplex, say. But you could still require a single primary entrance facing the street. So those types of standards can't scale, but other types of standards could, like height, bulk, et cetera, would scale with the larger building. And then again, we cannot apply design standards to triplexes that are created through conversion. Okay, Terry, quadplexes. Quads are very similar in, I think, almost all respects to triplexes. The approval process is the same as for detached, single-family. Numerical standards, we're not required to allow more than four dwelling units on a lot or parcel. Minimum lot size for quads, if the minimum lot size for the, in the zone for detached, single-family is less 7,000 square feet or less. And again, in Eugene, we were talking about 4,500 square feet, then the minimum lot size for a quad may not exceed 7,000 square feet. So max minimum lot size in Eugene for a quadplex would be 7,000 square feet. Density cannot be applied. Setbacks are the same as those that apply to detached, single-family. 10 front yard, 10 feet in the front yard, five feet interior yard. Height, same, not lower than the maximum height for detached, single-family, so 30 feet. Parking, again, depends on the size of the lot. So lot is less than 3,000 square feet, we're limited to one off-street parkings, but between 3,499 or 4,999, two off-street parking spaces, between 5,000 and 6,999, three off-street parking spaces, and then 7,000 square feet or greater, four. Same lot coverage, floor area ratio, kind of same as detached, single-family. So we're looking at 50% lot coverage. And then, oh, we didn't talk about this for triplexes, but it does apply there too. There's a requirement for sufficient infrastructure for that lot. So a developer can meet with city staff ahead of time to make sure that, you know, the lot either has currently, or one can be provided connections to public water and sewer systems, access to the street system, and storm drainage facilities. And then the design standards for quads are the same as triplexes. You have that choice. You can just use the design standards in the model code. We could adopt something less restrictive than the model code. We could apply single-family design standards. Or, when I missed this in the last round as well, I'm sorry, we can apply alternative design standards, which is a whole nother alternate process, Commissioner Borowski, that I'm happy to talk about now, or when we get to that slide. And I see Commissioner Borowski's hand is up.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding conversions. So let's say, when you're talking about sufficient infrastructure, so if you're doing a conversion and the new wastewater standard supply, you know, the, the standards that were in place back when a house was built, maybe back in the 50s, are different than the standards that are built now. Would that affect, I mean, would they have to put, if it was a conversion, would they have to put the new stormwater standards in, or would that be something that we could, could or couldn't adjust?
That's a great question, Commissioner Borowski. The way that sufficient infrastructure is defined, it is a connection that's capable of meeting established service levels. And I'm guessing that means current established service levels, but that's something that we can certainly follow up with, with public work staff. Okay. Commissioner Fragola.
Thank you. So I know we've talked about this before, but can someone remind me how our multifamily housing code is going to interface with this process? I mean, will we be kind of looking at it in tandem and thinking about if we're going to apply it? If it exceeds the, the bumpers, do we modify it? I mean, I'm just curious. I know we've talked about it before, but I could just use a refresher.
Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. I can take that. So right now, for any development that includes three or more dwellings on a single lot, it triggers the multifamily standards, which is a whole different set of, of standards that do go into things like building articulation, landscaping requirements, recycling and trash enclosures. It gets pretty detailed. And so that's something that we are going to have to tackle through this process, whether it means saying that those standards do not apply to middle housing types and just kind of getting out of it that way. Or you could go the way of going into each, each standard and seeing if that can be applicable and consistent with, with the state's rules. So I hope that answered your question.
But they would have to be consistent with the state rules.
Correct. And yeah, correct.
There, Commissioner Fragola is, for many of these middle housing types, you know, the standards hearkening back to detached, single-family standards, not multifamily standards. So the multifamily standards wouldn't be able to apply. There might be some flexibility in terms of some of the higher middle housing types. If you got to a point where there were so many units, maybe we would import some of the multifamily standards. But I think, I guess I will just defer to Jeff and not speculate and say that, that's certainly something that's going to have to be taken into consideration in the code writing.
Yeah, absolutely. None of these standards apply to single-family homes. So it presents an inherent conflict with, with the rules. So it'll have to be addressed.
Okay, Terry, next slide, townhouses. So same approval process has to be the same as detached, single-family, which means a building permit. Numerical standards for townhouses, the city has to require at least two attached townhouse dwellings and must allow up to four attached townhouse dwellings and may allow five or more. So there have to be at least two to be considered a townhouse. We have to allow a proposal of up to four, and we could allow many more than four if we decided to do that. Minimum lot size, the average minimum lot size for a lot in a townhouse project cannot be greater than 1,500 square feet. But the city could adopt different minimum lot sizes for internal townhouses, external townhouses, and corner units as long as they all average out to 1,500 square feet or less. Street frontage, if we choose to apply street frontage, then the minimum cannot exceed 20 feet. And the city is not required to allow townhouses on flag lots, although we could choose to. For density, the city has to allow either four times the maximum density for detached, single-family in the zone, or 25 units per acre, whichever is less. In Eugene, as you heard earlier, the maximum density is 14 units per acre for detached, single-family in R1. So four times that is more than 25 units per acre, so it would be 25 units per acre. And setbacks generally same as detached, single-family, have to allow zero-foot side setbacks for the lot lines where the townhouses are attached, which makes sense. Height, the minimum height cannot be lower than minimum height for detached, single-family in the same zone. If the city requires covered or structured parking for townhouses, then the city has to allow at least three stories for a townhouse. The thinking is the parking will kind of be on the bottom, and then two living stories. If the city does not require covered or structured parking, then we could set a height limit at two stories. Parking may not require more than one off-street parking spot per townhouse unit. Um, parking may not require more than one off-street parking spot per townhouse unit. Um, bulk and scale. Standards cannot cumulatively, cumulatively or individually limit the bulk and scale of the whole project greater than that bulk and scale of a detached, single family dwelling. And that is something that, um, I feel like I don't have a great handle on what that means in practice, but I'm sure that, uh, Jeff and his team do or will by the time this is all over. And then same requirement for sufficient infrastructure and same set of options in terms of design standards. And then moving to cottage clusters, Terry, the last type, um, same approval process is applied to detached, single families, so building permit. This numerical standards, uh, the city is not required to set a minimum number of units for a cottage cluster, but it can choose to. If it chooses to require a minimum, the minimum can be three, four, or five cottage cluster units. And then the city can allow, but not require more than five units in a cottage cluster. It gets confusing really fast, but see, you could have, um, you know, we could have a set of standards that require at least three cottages in a cottage cluster and/or that require, um, five units in a cottage cluster. We cannot require more than five, but we certainly could allow many more than five. And then we must allow, so cottage clusters, as you recall, cluster around a common courtyard. Must allow at least eight units per common courtyard, but are not required to allow more than eight, but may allow more than eight, so. Um, minimum lot size. If the minimum lot size for a detached, single family in the same zone is less than 7,000 square feet, which it is in R1 in Eugene, then the minimum lot size for a cottage cluster may not be greater than 7,000 square feet. Um, minimum lot width, same as that for a detached, single family in the same zone, which in R1 is typically 50 feet. Density, the city cannot apply maximum density to cottage clusters, but they have to meet a minimum density of at least four units per acre. And then setbacks, um, may not be greater than, the perimeter setbacks may not be greater than the setbacks applicable to detached, single family, so that 10-foot front yard setback, five-feet interior setbacks. And then we cannot require more than 10 feet um, or the distance required by applicable building code, whichever is less between the cottages themselves. The dwelling unit size, um, each dwelling unit has a maximum building footprint of less than 900 square feet. And there are some requirements about what we can do to exempt some of that for parking or garages. And, but generally, these are supposed to be small, 900 square feet or less. Um, may not require more than one off-street parking spot per cottage. Uh, may not apply lot coverage or floor area ratio standards to cottage clusters at all. Same infrastructure requirements and same options for design standards. So there you have it. Those are the standards for the various housing types. Um, Terry, next slide. So this is the, the alternative, and then there are two kind of alternative tracks that are built into the rules. One, to allow cities to adopt alternative maximum density and minimum lot size standards, which we've talked about already in response to Commissioner Borowski's question. And if a city wants to do something different in terms of maximum density or minimum lot size, we have to show, um, you know, the various housing types allowed on various percentages of lots and some other things that didn't fit well on this PowerPoint slide. Then Terry, if you'll go to the next slide, there's another alternative process for citing or design standards. So, um, you'll remember you had all those choices, just apply the standards for the model code, something less restrictive than the model code, same standards as detached, single family or alternative citing or design standards. And this was, I think, in response to some cities who said, look, we already have some citing and design standards that are working well for us. We're seeing development of middle housing in our city already. We want to keep rolling with those, um, but they're not exactly the same as the model code or, you know, maybe in some ways they're more restrictive, but they're working. We can show that middle housing is being developed. So DLCD said, okay, um, if you want to do alternative citing or design standards, we're going to give you a pathway to do that, but you're going to have to make a bunch of findings about how the standards that you're proposing don't cause unreasonable cost and delay. And we're going to compare that, those findings to the standards that you would otherwise be adopting under the model code or something else. So, um, and here are all the things that you have to look at to show that your proposed alternative standards will not cause unreasonable cost and delay, including kind of cost of construction, cost of land, a whole bunch of things. So it requires pretty significant findings to be able to adopt alternate signing or design standards. And I think, Terry, that might be my last slide.
Woo. It is, and we're super close to being on time. Um, so I'll pause and see if there are any general or high-level questions for this. I've noted down a couple of follow-up questions. I'm sure Lauren has too, um, and that's all great. So thank you for taking the time to ask your questions. Um, just kind of pausing, okay.
Mr. Editor.
Are you ready for me? Sorry, I'm trying to raise my hand and the thing. I, I just have some general questions about the distinction between units such as townhouses and apartments or cottage clusters and ADUs. I just, I, I, I want to, I guess, I don't know if it's a question or if it is just like, I am curious to kind of really understand those, because I don't know if they are, um, ownership opportunities that are what makes them vary, or if it's more like, um, I don't know. I just, I don't see a clear distinction between what would be an ADU and what would be a cottage. And so I know a cottage cluster would be obviously a cluster of them, but, um, I guess, I, I just kind of curious, as we move forward, um, it, it is something that I would, would want to try to be, ma- make sure that we're really clear on, because I would hate to see us get into situations where people are trying to build something and because of this, like, very specific, um, criteria that makes it, qualifies it as an ADU, that suddenly it can't be more than a certain height or, you know, something like, does that make sense?
Yeah, Commissioner Edwards, I think you've hit a couple of really important high point, decision points, and Matt and Kate may have some things to say about them as well. But, um, so one piece that you highlighted is ownership opportunities and, and how that affects the various housing types. Um, townhouses are specifically designed for ownership. They're on small lots, so you own the townhouse and the underlying real property. For most of the other housing types, as Hustle 2001 was drafted, um, there's no opportunity to own the unit and the underlying real property. It's all in one lot. Um, so they will probably default to be rentals for the most part, although there is a process to go through to create condominiums where you own the unit. And then there's an association that owns the underlying real property and any kind of, um, pieces of the building that everyone takes advantage of. Like if it's an attached quadplex, everybody's using the same roof, say. Um, there's, Eugene currently has a process for dividing duplexes. So that is something that could continue on into the middle housing code amendments, so that each half of the duplex becomes its own unit on its own lot. Um, and then there's a bill in the legislature this session that would provide for, um, land division for all the middle housing types. So theoretically, any of them could be divided so that someone could own the individual unit and the underlying real property. And that becomes kind of differently complicated depending on whether those units are attached or detached, which is kind of another question that your, um, comments brought up, which is, you know, the, what if, if Eugene decided to allow middle housing types as detached, um, you know, what is the difference between a detached quadplex and a four-unit cottage cluster? Or a detached duplex and a single family home and an ADU? Or, you know, there are a lot of kind of cross, um, pollinations that can happen there. And so one of the things that was discussed a lot during rulemaking and our staff have discussed as well is this idea of, you know, we identify housing types and set standards for those types. And then a developer who wants to build four units on a lot has to declare at the outset that this is a cottage cluster development or is a detached quadplex.
Right.
And would comply with those, and they get to decide, you know, what it is. Um, but once they kind of pick a lane, then they comply with those standards for that type.
Okay, that's super helpful, because I, you know, I, um, I definitely, I want to be able to make that distinction so that it's very clear and objective as people embark in this process. And I will just say that I also really support ownership opportunities, because I think that's a big piece of why this was a necessary, um, step in land use was the, you know, the fact that we can allow for more people to enter into an ownership opportunity at a lower price point. So, um, I do, uh, recognize that that is one of the objectives of this, uh, legislation. So I'm supportive of that. So thank you, Lauren, appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Borowski.
Sorry, Terry. I just want to interrupt and say, now we are behind. And I want to make sure that we give Matt and Kate a chance to do their presentation. So I would suggest that we let them do it and then bunch all the questions after they're done. Does that work? Okay, awesome. And we're going to go on to the next one and take it away, Matt.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, I will, as I go through here, I'll try not to repeat too much of what Lauren has said. I will have some slides where I kind of compare the model code to the, the rules. So I'll try to not repeat the stuff about the rules in most of those places. So, um, and some of this, Lauren talked about already, kind of how the model code, um, works in conjunction with the OARs. I'd say generally, the model code's intended to be essentially a safe harbor. A lot of the standards in the model code were evaluated in terms of financial feasibility of development. Um, and so they're sort of in place so that cities can apply the model code um, or it can be applied to cities, and there's some good evidence that those development types will be feasible from a development or financial feasibility perspective. And, um, so Lauren already kind of talked about the alternative design standards under the third bullet here, that if the city wants to do something different, it needs to demonstrate it doesn't cause unreasonable cost or delay. We, she listed all of those different, um, things you have to look at. I would say for some alternative design standards, those findings are probably going to be pretty easy to make. For others, not so much. Um, and I'll maybe give you a couple of examples as I go through and talk about some of this. Um, and Lauren already talked about kind of, um, when the model code applies, um, the city can, a city can choose to apply selected standards from the model code or the whole thing. If the city doesn't adopt standards and compliance with the rules, the model code is applied to them. If some of the standards they adopt are not consistent or in compliance with the model code, then portions of the model code would be applied to the city to those housing types where you are not being consistent or in compliance. So, next one. Um, so duplexes, um, uh, really, the model code standards for duplexes are largely the same as the rules or the minimum compliance standards. There's a few differences, which I will mention here. Um, so in terms of, um, the, um, single, essentially, they need, cities need to apply the same standards as applied to single family detached standards. The OAR says, um, you can apply less restrictive standards. The model code just says you're applying the same standards. Um, in terms of attached versus detached units, um, the, oh, the rules say you must allow attached and you have the option of allowing detached units. Um, and the model code basically says you can do, you know, either one. Uh, off-street parking, um, the, the OAR, as Lauren said, you can require up to two off-street parking spaces per duplex. You can allow for more, but you cannot require more than two. The model code says you can't allow any, um, or you can't require any. You can allow however many, but you can't require, you can require zero. Um, so that's a pretty big difference, um, I'd say between the two for that one. Next one. So I'll talk about, uh, kind of triplex and four qu- plex or quadplex standards. Um, kind of a similar approach here in terms of attached versus detached units for the model code versus the rules. Um, again, you've kind of got the option, um, in, to some degree, in either case, but according to the rule, you have to allow attached units as triplexes or quadplexes, and you can allow detached units. Um, minimum lot size, um, Lauren already talked about what those requirements are with the rules um, in terms of the model code, um, the, you basically, um, pro- providing for allowing the same minimum lot size, um, as the single family, a single family detached in the same zone. And then scale and bulk in the model code. The model code essentially uses floor area ratio to control scale or blo- or bulk, and that overrides whatever you use in terms of lot coverage. So instead of lot coverage, you would use floor area ratio and the, um, maximum floor area ratio varies by lot size, varies by the, the, the base zone, minimum lot size. So essentially, if you've got a smaller base zone, minimum lot size, you get a higher floor area ratio. You get essentially kind of more, um, more floor area, um, per the size of the lot compared to where you have a larger minimum lot size, and that's kind of confusing. Um, but that's, that's the way that works. Um, in terms of parking, um, that also somewhat similar to the rule varies by lot size, but it varies by the base minimum lot size, base zone minimum lot size as opposed to the actual lot size. Um, and essentially, um, for, uh, zones where you have a smaller base zone, minimum lot size, you cannot require as much off-street parking as in, um, zones where you have a larger, um, minimum lot size in your base zone. And, um, in the rule, you've got the option to apply an on-street credit to meet a portion of the off-street parking requirement. In the model code, essentially, you, it says you shall allow for an off-street parking requirement under certain conditions. So you'd have to have enough space to park a car, um, that you'd have to allow parking on that side of the street. So there's a number of conditions, but if, if the, the location meets those conditions, then you would essentially need to allow the off-street parking requirement or the, the on-street credit to meet the off-street requirement. Sorry about that. I'm trying to talk too fast, so apologies for that. Um, all right. And do raise your hands, interrupt me if you have questions. Otherwise, I'm going to just keep plowing through. And I should have mentioned, I'm going to cover, um, duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. And then Kate is going to cover, uh, townhomes and cottage clusters. So, um, the model code design standards, um, essentially, there are sort of, uh, several categories of, I would call them pretty basic or limited design standards within the model code that apply to triplexes and quadplexes. Some similar standards for townhomes as well. Um, so one is entry orientation, so flexible standard. You get some options. You either need to have, and this isn't all entries to the triplex or the quadplex, but at least one entry, either it needs to face the street, needs to be at a 45-degree angle from the street, open onto a porch that faces the street or face a common open space. And it needs to be within a certain distance also of the front facade of the house if it's not facing the street. So that's kind of how entryways are treated. Again, that applies to, um, the units that are facing the street. It wouldn't apply to the units that are behind that unit. So, um, and it's really just, you got to have at least one entrance that does that. All right. Windows, this is pretty. All right. Windows, this is pretty standard. Um, basically, a minimum of fifteen percent of the street-facing facade um, of a triplex or a quadplex um, needs to be windows indoors, essentially. Um, and um, if you've got uh, you know, a triplex or a quadplex, let's say it's um, uh, three detached units and two of those are behind the unit that faces the street, then those units don't have the same fifteen percent requirement. It really just applies to the facade that's facing the street. So, um, next one. Um, garages and off-street parking areas. Um, so I'll actually start with the second bullet here. The intent here is to promote kind of a pedestrian-friendly environment by kind of limiting how much of the front of the frontage is devoted to, to driveways um, and/or off-street parking. So it essentially limits the total width of the um, the driveway approach um, to, and the off-street parking area to fifty percent of the street frontage. So essentially in this little diagram here, if you add up all the As and divide it by the total width of the lot, can't be more than fifty percent. So that's how that one works. Next one, um, kind of, the last one was for actually off-street parking. This is for driveway approaches and it works in a somewhat similar way. Um, although the limit is by width in feet. So here we're showing on the diagram, the diagram to the left, we've got a four unit attached. Uh, it's like a quadplex. Um, and if you add up the width of all the driveway approaches, um, you can't exceed thirty-two feet. So you're basically saying you get eight feet per, or you could have, you know, two side-by-side driveways. Um, and, or, you know, uh, two of those pairs and they could each be sixteen feet. You can vary it, but you can't, you can't um, go greater than thirty-two feet in terms of that total width. And it's the same kind of, um, same kind of ideas with the off-street parking. Um, you're, you're just trying to limit the number of curb cuts and you're trying to limit the impact of that um, on pedestrians as they're walking through an neighborhood. Um, and, oh, so that's, that's all for me. I'm gonna just take a quick pause and see if you have questions before Kate talks about row houses and cottage clusters. Sorry to talk so fast. I'm trying to make sure I got through that, but any questions on any of those?
I think we're good to go.
Awesome.
All right. Thanks, Matt. So I'm going to talk about row houses or townhouses. Eugene calls them row houses, so that's the word we used. Um, so again, I'm going to try to quickly go through these and, and compare them to the OAR, the minimum compliance standards. Um, so generally, the, the model code is quite a bit more flexible um, than the city could choose to be to meet minimum compliance. Um, so for minimum lot size, for the, for the rules, it says they can't be greater than fifteen hundred square feet on average, but the model code has no minimum. So you could have really pretty small um, townhouse lot sizes. Um, the density kind of takes an interesting approach based, that's based on, because the idea with the model code is it needs to be able to um, apply in, you know, in any city in Oregon. So uh, in your sort of higher density zones where you have smaller minimum lot sizes for a single family, you don't necessarily need to allow four times the density. Say you have like a twenty-five hundred square foot minimum lot size. You don't necessarily need to allow that to become four townhouse lots. Um, but the way the kind of calculation works out ends up being kind of equivalent to the um, the allowance for minimum compliance, which is four times the density for a single family um, or twenty-five units per acre, whichever is less. So, but for Eugene, it sounds like um, twenty-five units per acre, say for the R one, R one zone is probably where you would land for kind of a minimum compliance approach. Um, for minimum lot width or lot frontage, um, for the, for the minimum rules, you can all uh, require up to twenty feet of uh, public street frontage. But for the model code, there's no, no frontage requirement. So essentially, you could have townhouses that are, you know, accessed from the street by a, a private street or by a driveway. They don't, they don't need to face the street at all, and there's no minimum lot width or mo- uh, minimum lot frontage. So again, pretty flexible compared to the, to the rules. Um, again, no limit on the number of attached units. So you could, you know, you're basically um, following the model code approach. Your, your limitation would be sort of your block standards or other kind of connectivity standards. Um, and that compares to the, to the allowance and the rules, which is you can limit them to four uh, attached units or more. And then for parking, there is a requirement in the model code for one space per unit, but there's also that on-street credit, which um, the model code says you must, you must apply the on-street credit. Um, and then for the rules, you can't require more than one space per unit, and the, the credit is optional. Um, next slide. So moving on to design standards for uh, row houses. So the entry orientation and the window requirements are essentially the same as the triplex and the fourplex standards. So I think we can kind of move on to the next one. Um, so unit definition, this is one that's unique to the row house model code. Um, so each unit is required to have at least one design feature, and there's kind of a menu of options that you can choose from. So things like roof, roof dormers, balconies, um, offsets of the facade, bay windows, that sort of thing. And it's a sort of a, a pretty limited articulation, building articulation standard. Um, and it's just intended to break up facades of really, if you have a, if you do allow a long uh, stretch of townhouse units, um, meant to just kind of visually break that up a little bit. All right, next slide. So driveway access and parking, um, the way the model code standards work is um, it allows driveways in the front of units rather than from behind or to the side or from an alleyway. Um, it only allows that if you meet certain standards. So the um, the driveways are limited in width to twelve feet. Um, there's some other standards. I didn't list everything here. Um, and that, oh, that has to be on a local street, so it wouldn't allow this on a collector or, or an arterial. And basically, if you don't meet all of those standards, um, then your, your driveway access needs to be from basically to the rear of units, either through kind of through the middle of the, of the development, um, or kind of to the side. If you're on a corner lot, it has to be from the side. Um, or if you're on an alleyway, then that access has to be from an alley. All right, next one. Okay, that's it for row houses. I guess I'll pause really quickly there to see if there's any clarifications needed there.
We've got Commissioner Taylor and then Commissioner Borowski.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I just want to confirm, i- i- it seems pretty obvious, but at this stage, I ju- I just want to say it, to say it, is if a jurisdiction wants to relax the code, for instance, let's say allowing garage, I'm from Versadon, off-street parking in the front yard only if a local street. Adjustment review tool, for instance, to potentially allow that onto a collector would still be an allowed tool that a jurisdiction can use. It gets more flexible rather than um, obviously, the minimum here is being met. You're just allowing the potential through a discretionary process to have more flexibility.
Yeah, I ca- I can't speak to Eugene's process really specifically, but yes, generally, your cities are able to modify the model code standards as long as they move in the direction of more flexibility. It's when you go the other way that you get into the territory of alternative design standards and you need to justify those.
Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at these driveway design standards and I'm, I'm wondering if they don't comply with the city's access management plan as far as curb cuts? What is the, I mean, do we have to change the access management plans or say that you have to do a different type of driveway? Because the curb cuts, you can't have a curb cut every eight feet or every ten feet. Uh, it, or within certain, certain areas close to a, a end of a block. I'm just wondering how, how is that going to be addressed?
So my understanding is that I think access management standards are still acceptable. Um, Matt, you're welcome to jump in if you, if you know more.
Um, I'll, I'll just say, so you know, what this is saying is you can't have a driveway that's wider than twelve feet. It doesn't say um, that you have to allow the next driveway within eight feet or six feet or ten feet or whatever of that first driveway. Your access management standards would still apply. Um, this is really just speaking to the width of the driveway. Um, and with the, in the case of um, triplex and quadplexes, the combined width um, of driveways. So I, I think it, it doesn't necessarily preclude or um, say that you can't continue to acquire access management standards as long as there's not conflict between them.
Thanks, Matt. And I, I would just add that um, in the model code, there is a reference to um, to the city's local standards for arterials and collectors. Um, so instead of trying to impose some kind of standard for those streets, it just defers to the city's standards for those.
The other piece about the model code to remember is that um, unless Eugene misses the adoption deadline, we're free to pick and choose and modify standards from the model code as much as we want. The question of um, a true conflict between the model code and access management standards would really only come up if we were forced to apply the model code directly because we missed our deadline.
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Taylor.
So I, I, Lauren, actually, you kind of addressed this uh, and kind of what Kate said with the, with the caveat that if for some reason we have a conflicting code standard that actually disallows uh, that mid- missing middle, middle housing type from actually being developed within those bumper guard standards. Is that correct? So for instance, uh, I think it's great. They left out collector and arterial. That gets more at what Commissioner Borowski was talking about. But let's say um, there are direct conflicts uh, with access management that would disallow kind of those minimum or bumper guard standards to be met for townhouses, for instance. We'd ha- those are the other code sections that we definitely have to look at to adjust to allow these housing types.
If, I think I understand what your question is, Commissioner Taylor. So yes, we need to comply with the rules. That is the minimum we need to do. And if there's something in our code that is in conflict with one of the requirements of the rules, then we would need to take care of that conflict. Um, the model code provisions are something that um, it are nice to have in terms of a safe harbor to know that, you know, if we adopt signing and design standards for various housing types from the model code, then we can be confident that they will not cause unreasonable cost and delay. Um, but we're not required to import those standards. And the only time that there would be a true conflict between the model code and some of our code standards would be if we miss the deadline and it applies directly.
I, I want to ask an obvious question. Um, in, in our analogy, we have bumpers, we have these uh, guy, guardrails. And then we have the mod- and that's the OAR, that's the rule. And then inside that, we have this model code. So the question is, why isn't the model code the same as the guardrails? That seems kind of goofy. And then my, the end of the analogy is we're allowed to move our white lines. So if the model codes the white line, we can move the white line inboards or even outboards. We just can't go beyond the guardrails. Is that, have I got this sort of close to being right?
I think that's a fair analogy. I think I, I'll, I'll definitely let Matt and Kate jump in as well because I know they've been involved in the model code since the beginning. But I think the, the model code was intended to serve two purposes. One was, you know, for cities that couldn't meet the deadline, and there was something ready to go that would apply to them to allow these middle housing types. And then also um, for cities who either, you know, didn't have the staff or the time or the inclination to do the work to kind of iter- iteratively update their own code. This was intended to be kind of a plug-and-play product that you could just pick up and, and go and be in compliance with the minimum standards, the minimum requirements. So um, and they're not exactly the same because I think the minimum requirements were intended to be more flexible to allow cities to have a little bit more room to kind of create the set of standards that worked best for them. Um, but the model code is one product, so it, it is a little less flexible. Um, but it is clear that the standards in it comply with the rules. Did I get that, Matt? What do you think?
Yep, Lauren said just about everything I would have said. Um, I think that I, just one more bit on kind of why they're different. The model code has, had to be written in a way that we felt it could be applied to any city in Oregon, regardless of kind of what their existing um, code requirements look like. Um, and so for us, for instance, with bulk enassing, lot coverage did not make sense as a type of standard to apply for bulk enassing. FAR did in terms of something that could just be applied and substituted everywhere. Um, so there are some things that differ for that reason because of the fact that the rules, as Lauren said, allow for some more flexibility and allow for sort of looking at what, how your code is already structured and tailoring your standards to meet that structure as opposed to kind of dropping something in on top of it. So um, there were a lot of discussions where um, it made sense for the model code to be different than the minimum uh, standards or the rules.
And I would just add one, maybe one more piece to that, which is that I think the state's perspective was, okay, if you're going to have our model code, we're gonna push, we're gonna, we're gonna push it a little bit. So like for duplexes, no parking is required. So that's the state saying, hey, we don't think parking should be required for duplexes. We'll allow you to do that if you're going to adopt your own standards. But if you're going to apply our code, that's what it's going to be. So. Yeah, so that's why it's, it's moving a little bit more on the sort of flexible, trying to promote feasibility of middle housing kind of side. Okay, moving on to cottage clusters, I think. So I, I'm realizing there's one important piece that we didn't include on this slide, which is that um, for the administrative rules, cities are allowed to allow cottage clusters to be on a single lot. Um, they could be through, they could, a city could require a cottage cluster to go through a subdivision to have units on, on individual lots with some shared property for the cottage, um, or for the common courtyard or for shared parking areas. Or a city could allow both of those paths. Um, the model code took the kind of most straightforward approach, which is just to allow cottages on a single lot. Um, and I think the, the main reason is that it would have been really challenging to write sort of subdivision, clear and objective subdivision standards that it could be applied in any city in Oregon. Um, so we decided to go with, with, yeah, the, the more straightforward approach. But Eugene could decide, I'm guessing Eugene wouldn't choose to require cottages to be on individual lots. Um, but you could allow either, either path. It will be more difficult for staff and for us to, to, to write the clear and objective subdivision standards, but it's, you know, it's possible. So, um, yeah, I wanted to put that out there. Um, so for a minimum lot size, this really just applies to cottages on a single lot. Um, so for uh, the model code, it just defers to whatever the standard is for a single family detached in the same zone. And then for um, Lauren already, already mentioned this, it's, it's um, for Eugene, it would be seven thousand square feet or, or less. You could allow cottages on smaller lots, but as, it could be up to seven thousand square feet. Um, and then for minimum lot width, it could be, it can be no smaller than the minimum lot width for a single family detached, but it could be, could be less, or you could have no minimum. Um, for cottage sizes, so the um, the model code used an uh, maximum average unit size of fourteen hundred square feet. Um, so regardless, the, the nine hundred square foot building footprint applies. But then um, in addition to that, there's a, an average unit size. So you could have, you know, smaller than fourteen hundred and units larger than fourteen hundred. Um, but there's an average size limit. Um, whereas the rules allow cities to um, to limit each cottage size to a certain level. You could even go as low as nine hundred square feet total. Um, there's nothing in the rules that says you can't do that. Um, or you could have no limit on the, on the size beyond the nine hundred square foot, footprint. Uh, but we thought that for the, for the model code, an average unit size um, was appropriate because it allows, you know, more flexibility while still making sure that cottages are, are cottages and not just, you know, kind of regular single family homes. Um, for the number of cottages, there's no minimum or maximum in the model code. Um, so basically, the, the size of, of a cottage cluster would be limited only by what you could fit on a lot and, and make it work with uh, you know, setbacks and the, the courtyard, common courtyard and things like that. Um, and that, that compares to the rules, which say you, you can require a minimum of three, four or five units, and you have to allow at least eight units to share um, a common courtyard, which a common courtyard, which is how you sort of define a cottage cluster. And for lot coverage or FAR, there's no limitation on, in the model code in either. It doesn't apply in FAR like, like for triplexes and fourplexes. And then the rules say that you can't apply those at all. So basically that it's kind of the same. And then for parking, for the model code, if, if your unit, it's, it's based on the unit size. So if your unit is a thousand square feet or larger, there's one parking space required. But if it's smaller than that, then no spaces are required. And again, the on street credit must be applied. And then like most of the other housing types, you can require one space per unit, but not more than that. And you can't require garages. And then again, the off state or on street credit is optional.
Let's see, Commissioner Borowski has a question.
Yeah, the one thing that I don't see in any of this is the size of the common courtyard. And, and what that needs to be, I mean, in our multifamily standards, we have minimum sizes for open spaces and those types of things. I mean, could the common courtyard be a, a three by three square of, of land? It's,
You'll actually see it on the next slide.
Yeah. Yeah, that's part of the design standards. But it's a good question. So yeah, next, I think we can go to the next slide. Or actually the next, next slide. I'll just, so I'll just say, there you go. So in the model code, it's a hundred and fifty square feet per cottage and there's a minimum dimension of fifteen feet. Yeah. So then, so your, your courtyard size kind of scales up based on how many dwellings you have in your, in your cottage cluster. Okay. All right. So maybe we'll go back. So there are some cottage orientation standards. So you know, your cottage cluster is kind of defined by your common courtyard. So cottages are, are required to be kind of clustered around a courtyard. The model code says that fifty percent of the cottages must face the courtyard and be within ten feet. And cottages need to abut the courtyard on, on two sides. But then the other cottages that aren't required to face the courtyard, they have to face a pedestrian path that's directly connected to the courtyard. And then cottages that are near the street are allowed to face the street rather than to face the courtyard. Okay, next slide. Oh, I think we can, if you go back one, there are a couple more on the other side. Yeah, thanks. So we talked about the minimum size of the courtyard. The model code talks about having a mix of landscaping, lawns, pedestrian paths, paved courtyard, could include recreational amenities. But it doesn't really define like what proportion each of those must occupy, or it doesn't have really detailed, say landscaping standards. It does say that your impervious areas limit to seventy five percent. So really a good portion of your courtyard could be paved, you know, courtyard space. Okay, I think we can move on. So a lot of cottage cluster codes include allowances for a community building, which is like a shared, you know, similar to what you might have in a, in a multifamily development. And so that is, that is allowed. I think one, it's one community building per cottage cluster is permitted. But the scale is limited by, you have to include the community bill, building in the calculation of average unit size. So if you have a, a larger community building, that kind of your units would have to be smaller to kind of make up for it. So the idea is that community buildings should, should be roughly the same scale as the, as the cottages themselves. There are requirements for pedestrian access between the units and the, the courtyard and to the, to parking areas and to the sidewalk. And those need to be four, four feet wide and hard surfaced. There's a windage, or excuse me, a window coverage requirement. For cottages that are close to the street, they would have to meet the same window requirements as single family detached. So what that means in Eugene, there, as far as I know, there are no window coverage requirements for single family detached in, at least in the base zones. So unless the city decided to change that, there would be no window standard for cottage clusters if you follow the model code. And then there's also an allowance for an existing single family dwelling to become kind of part of a cottage cluster. So you could develop a cottage cluster as sort of an infill development with an existing home. And that home wouldn't need to meet all of the design standards that would apply to the new dwellings that are added to the lot. Okay, I think there's, this is the last slide. So I think the idea with cottage clusters is to really encourage parking to be kind of shared in a and clustered, clustered together. It does, the, the model code does allow parking spaces to be, you know, assigned to individual units, but I think to promote kind of a pedestrian kind of friendly environment within the cluster. There are some design standards for, for parking. So there's sort of a limit to the number of spaces that can be attached and within a cluster. There are landscape buffer requirements between those clustered parking areas. There's some sort of setback requirements and spacing and locational standards as well. And then for individual parking spaces, I think Lauren hit on this, that for the model code, individual attached garages up to two hundred feet can be exempted from the building footprint, which essentially means that a cottage could be up to eleven hundred square feet if it, if it includes an attached garage. But anything above that would then subtract from the livable footprint space. Detached garages are limited to four hundred square feet, which is essentially a two, two car garage. And then garage door widths are limited to twenty feet. I think that's it. Looks like there might be at least one question.
Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
So I have a question. I'm not sure, Kate, Matt, if you can answer this. And you don't have to answer, it doesn't have to be answered today. It's definitely high level. I, I'm just really curious why missing middle or if there's any flexibility that they've taken such a literal transition, translation of the, the cottage cluster. For instance, there's a lot of design that can accomplish the elements of a cottage cluster without the actual courtyard being in the center. It could be off to the side because of the context. So I'm just curious why there's such a literal, because you know, obviously we're moving to miss a middle for flexibility, whereas we're once again creating inflexibility around a specific design type by definition. So I'm just wondering if, for instance, the city of Eugene, can we flex how cottage cluster is being actually literally translated from a design standpoint?
So I'm gonna take a first very quick shot at that. The legislation itself was actually pretty specific in defining cottage clusters. So the legislation itself said that cottage clusters are groups of cottages oriented around a common courtyard. And so that legislation said that, the legislation itself said that the footprint can be no, no larger than nine hundred square feet of the cottage. And so the legislation defined cottage clusters a little more specifically than it did other things. So that was kind of the starting point. And then again, in terms of the model code, we're really just trying to create a like reasonable sort of off the shelf set of standards that a city could use to regulate cottage clusters and kind of, let's say, not have really bad outcomes. The, the rules give some more flexibility on that, but the model code was intended to be this kind of off the shelf thing that you could apply or any city could apply and have a reasonable set of standards.
I would just add, thank you, Matt. I totally agree with what you said. And I would just add that cottage clusters, if you think about development in, say, a greenfield, greenfield setting, you could imagine a pretty large cottage cluster development. And so I think in that kind of context, some, some good design standards become maybe more important rather than, oh, if you're just gonna squeeze in five, four or five units on a, on an, in the lot, there's, there's only so many ways you can like really screw that up. But I think for a larger development, I think having some more detailed standards is appropriate. But also, as Matt said, you know, that's just the model code. The city can choose to kind of do whatever they want and, and really not require much in the way of specific design standards.
Thank you guys so much. I'm gonna stop sharing because we're over by a minute and I'm not sure if folks have other meetings or if our broadcast is gonna get cut off. So I want to say a couple of wrap up things. First, thanks everyone for your questions and to Matt and Kate and Lauren for presenting such detailed and really good information. We do have our survey launching on Engage Eugene this Friday, February fifth. So if you wanted to make sure that I said that. And she's working on it really hard. So that'll be great. Your next meeting is February ninth. And we'll be back with more model, or sorry, middle housing, not model code. More middle housing updates on March ninth. And the last thing I just want to say is that planning commission recruitment is starting amazingly today. I don't think the link or application link is quite up, but it is planned to be up starting today and recruitment closes March twelfth. You have questions about that? I'm happy to try to answer them. Anything else, Lauren or Jeff, for the good of the order?
Okay, thank you so much. Terrific. Exactly what we wanted to deep dive. Middle housing one on one. So now we have the basis. We know what we can do, what, where our guardrails are. Now let's start moving those white lines around and make it work for us. So until we meet again, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.